To the Sun Prairie Committee of the Whole Meeting, I would like to start by first welcoming our newest members who have not been at the dais, Alder McElroy, Alder Jokish, and Alder Bowling, and the rest of you, I would like to welcome back. This feels so good. I'm so happy to see everybody back, and so we will get started. First item is roll call. Elena, please.
Bowling?
Here.
Crombie?
Here.
Jacobs?
Yep.
Jokish?
Here.
McElroy?
Here.
Polanski?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Stocker?
Here. And before we go any further, I would like to remind you, since we're in the dais here, if you could please put your phones on mute, very much appreciate that. First item is the approval of the minutes. Any changes?
Stevens moves to approve.
Okay, move and...
McElroy seconds.
Move and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Approved. Citizens' appearance. Don, anybody on that?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to council liaison and committee reports and updates. Anyone have anything to report? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. What I would like to do, we have unfinished business, which is the discussion and consideration of the CIP for 2022 to 2031. Since we have such a packed agenda for this evening, I would like to ask the council's indulgence to move that to the end and to get to the presentations and such. Does anybody have any objections?
I'm wondering if we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to participate in that.
Good point. Don, no one on?
We have one person for 6A and one person for 5A. Jason and William Dahl, they would like to speak out. I'm going to do it then. Is there time or not?
Okay, we are going to then move to 6A, and after the presentation by Jason Tisch, we will allow them to speak. So if we could, Scott, would you like to serve it up to us, please?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mr. President. So earlier this year, there was a referral regarding historic preservation that was made by the Committee of the Whole, and as a result of that referral, I reached out to Jason Tisch with the State Historic Preservation Office to get some more information about regulation of historic preservation in the state of Wisconsin. I felt that there was a great deal that we didn't know. We already had some misunderstandings over what was and was not possible, and in talking with Jason, he just gave a great overview of everything that is involved, everything from creating an ordinance and a historic preservation commission to the designation and protection of local properties if communities wish to do that, as well as some of the responsibilities associated with taking steps in that direction. And from that discussion, I contacted Council President Stocker, who had made the referral initially, and then both he and Alder McElroy and I met with Jason as well, and we all felt it was important for the Committee of the Whole to hear directly from Jason, you know, this overview, so you kind of knew what was involved with respect to taking any further steps on historic preservation. And so that's what we have this evening. So I'm going to introduce Jason, again, from the State Historic Preservation Office. He's got a short presentation for us, and then we'll have some time for Q and A. So Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, good to be with you all tonight. This is one of my favorite things to do. I've been in this position for about seven months, and I really enjoy talking with historic preservation commissions and councils about local programs. It's kind of my job here at the Historical Society to do this kind of thing. Is my volume okay? Can everyone hear me okay?
Perfect.
Okay, good. Thanks, Scott, for having me, and thank you, everyone in Sun Prairie, for looking at this issue. In out of respect for your packed agenda, I'm going to try to rush through my presentation. It typically takes about 20 minutes. I may be skipping some of it in light of where you all are at in thinking about this. Can I share my screen? Yeah, I can share my screen. So I'm going to put my presentation up here. How's that? Everybody can see?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is kind of a general overview of historic, of local historic preservation programs in Wisconsin and how they generally work. I work with the Wisconsin Historical Society. This is the building that I'm in right now, coming to you from the UW-Madison campus. The State Historical Society serves as the state archives of the history library on the UW-Madison campus. We operate the Historical Museum downtown Madison. We operate 11 historic sites. We have local history outreach. We publish through the WHS Press, and we have the State Historic Preservation Office, which is where I am coming from. So just quickly, kind of an overview of why we conserve historic places. I want to take a broad look at this just quickly, and I use, I like to use the word conserve and conservation because it has different connotations than words like preserve and preservation. Historic preservation is commonly used for this kind of program that you're looking at, but I like to talk about it also in terms of conservation, because it implies that properties are subject to change over time as usage of the spaces in properties changes. And in practice, that's usually what happens. Preservation and preserve have connotations of freezing a property in place, putting it in a jar like a museum piece, and that's not actually the goal of local historic preservation programs or any historic preservation program. If that's the way you're doing it or thinking about it, you're doing it wrong. Preservation policies are typically designed to conserve historic buildings, to manage the changes in order to minimize and avoid unnecessary loss of irreplaceable components and of those character-defining features and designs and materials. And briefly about the term places, mostly when we think about historic preservation, we think about buildings. There are other types of places in our communities that hold cultural and historic value, places like parks, cemeteries, effigy mounds, designed landscapes, outdoor places where important events happened. These can all hold important associations for a community. I just want to make sure that we keep those type of places in mind also when we talk about historic preservation policies. So why do we conserve historic places? There's a lot of personal reasons, nostalgia, artistic value, old buildings are beautiful, irreplaceable places, national, state, and local history. A community's identity and history are validated by the places that we can visit and walk through and experience. Travel, people like to go to historic places and places that define the community and the nation. Academic reasons, architecture history, the component of history, of human history that can tell us about ourselves and our history. On a policy level, for local governments, the question gets more nuanced. Why try to influence the conservation of historic places in a community? And as a municipality, it helps to think about these places as cultural resources, resources that carry a community's identity and sense of place, sense of identity. These places are critical to the cultivation of community pride and a sense of ownership and stewardship, and they integrate well with placemaking efforts. Most cities identify historic places in their planning efforts and their comprehensive plan. The full package of planning for these places can include identifying them, designating them, protecting them to some degree, to whatever degree your community is comfortable, and supporting those properties because they're, because they're these carriers of local history, history and heritage and pride. It's also useful to consider that public policy takes a long view, 20, 50, sometimes 100 years into the future. Buildings may go through in that time period many phases of ownership, and any one owner of a building is the steward of that building for the time that they own it. A local preservation program that includes historic preservation, zoning protections, helps a city decide which places are more important than a single owner who may want to make irreversible alterations to that place. More specific reasons why cities have implemented historic preservation policies, economic reasons. New, young businesses tend to prefer adaptive reuse of older buildings. They're typically in the center of town where small, young businesses like to be. They offer a unique vintage character. They're often less expensive than new construction, and a local preservation program can focus energy on getting those places listed in the National Register and leveraging tax credit financing for those places. Some cities do it for environmental reasons. Existing buildings are adaptable, they're reusable, they don't require the consumption of resources to demolish and rebuild new buildings. Tourism, some cities have cultivated a significant tourism economy based on historic neighborhoods, architecture, sometimes even a single extraordinary piece of architecture. Historic places are often the motivation for people visiting a place and staying, staying longer to experience more of that place. And affordability, older industrial buildings, commercial buildings, you can combine historic tax credits with low income tax, low income housing tax credits to create low income, moderate income housing. Neglected traditional residential districts with single-family detached housing, those neighborhoods can leverage the state historic tax credit. I wanted to draw a very clear distinction between the federal National Register Program, which is the federal program, and local designation, local ordinance designation. They're two very different programs. I'm thinking of them as two different silos, really. The National Register Program is a carrot, an incentive-based program for designating and conserving historic character of properties. It's incentive-based, it's based on a tax credit, it's honorary. There is no requirement to conform to any design standards. There's no protections offered by the National Register Program for private properties. When it comes to public properties, there's a little bit of protection, but really not a whole lot. It doesn't compel the conservation of private property, it doesn't restrict the use or treatment of private property, and the National Register Program is administered by, at the federal and state level. It doesn't prevent demolition, it provides no protection, doesn't prevent demolition. But I wanted to spell those common myths right up front. So local ordinances, I typically think of as the stick to the National Register's carrot. It's a rule-based program that implements standards for exterior alteration. It's a regulatory program. A lot of cities put their historic preservation program in their zoning code, some don't, there's a little bit of difference. So designation is a local action to compel conservation of properties that are designated under the program. It doesn't impose standards for exterior alteration. There are standards for review, so there's some protections in a local ordinance for properties that are designated under the local ordinance. It does place standards on treatments, but not use. And you can, you can put in a local ordinance different variances. Sorry. So I think of them as pressure releases. So a local ordinance is very much a creature of the, the local government that creates it, and, and cities put in different kinds of variances for economic considerations. There are some interesting variances out there that you can build in to the ordinance that your community wants to create. So just some characteristics of a successful local historic preservation program, what a successful local program looks like. It starts with a community conversation where the objectives of the program are broadly understood and supported, the purpose and intent is discussed and clearly articulated and has broad support by the community. The proposed rules, the proposed provisions of the ordinance are outlined and understood and negotiated, community-wide, as broadly, with as broad of engagement as possible, and the effort has broad participation among residents, city staff, elected officials. The next step is you build an effective ordinance. An effective ordinance has a clear purpose and intent. It creates a historic preservation commission to administer the ordinance and empowers that commission to enforce the standards, so it creates a quasi-judicial commission to enforce those standards and review proposed exterior alterations to designated properties. It provides for an appeal of that commission's decisions to a higher, higher authority. It includes criteria for designating historic properties, and I put in here that council has a final say. Typically, in most cities in Wisconsin, a historic preservation commission will recommend designation of properties in the community, and the, and a council or a board has a final say on that designation. An ordinance creates a clear process for nominating and designating historic properties, and again, the council typically has the final say. It creates standards for exterior alteration of designated properties, for new construction in historic districts and on historic parcels, and a lot of local ordinances include a separate set of standards for demolition of designated properties. And again, it builds in, you can build in whatever pressure releases that your community wants when rigid enforcement of those ordinances, of the ordinance, doesn't support the purpose and intent of the ordinance. And there are those cases, those cases come up. And it provides criteria for rescission of designation. In some cases, the community might want to rescind that designation. And in all caps, transparent. It's really important to be transparent in all phases of discussion and development of the ordinance, and then once the ordinance is in place, it's really important to be really clear on your website especially, about the processes and the rules that designated properties will be subject to. And historic preservation commission that functions well, again, the commission is created by the ordinance, a commission that functions well is one where the commissioners understand that they are an agent of the local government, and the commission is supported by a staff person. Most commissions in Wisconsin are supported by a city staff, usually planning staff, to kind of guide the commission in the interpretation of your, and application of the ordinance and the standards. A successful HP commission has broad expertise. We like to see as historian, architect, builder, elected official, and some adult residents, residents with a demonstrated interest in, in historic preservation and historic properties. It interprets and enforces standards in the ordinance as, again, as an agency of the local government, supports related programs, sometimes historic markers, sometimes local grants for historic properties. A lot of communities have a facade improvement grants for historic properties. It supports the planning efforts for historic properties, so whenever a historic property comes up in a planning issue, hopefully the HP commission is the go-to expert for how to, how to interpret and handle those properties. It's not advocate. A HP commission created by a local, a local HP ordinance doesn't, really should not be an advocate. They should support the historic properties to the extent that they are enabled by the A historic preservation commission should not raise money for historic properties. We have some cases where a historic preservation commission is raising money, and that just creates all kinds of problems and awkwardness and conflicts of interest. That kind of function is better left to, the advocacy and fundraising for historic properties is better left to a private nonprofit organization rather than the HP commission. The commission reports to the council annually on designations, project approvals, and whatever activity, activities they engage in over the year. And just brought a couple of examples of a successful application of a local historic preservation program, starting with La Crosse. La Crosse has been a CLG, and we'll get to CLGs in just a second. It's the state, it's the program that I run, and I'll tell you more about how that works. They've been a certified, it's a certified local government. La Crosse has been a certified local government since 1991. They've had a downtown historic district designated both on the National Register and under their local ordinance since 1994. So the forces of their ordinance, those standards, have been enforced in downtown La Crosse since 1994. They do also have a large residential historic district and about 95 individual landmarks that are designated under their local ordinance. They've also designated boat houses and a system of cast iron bubblers in the downtown area, and La Crosse has really taken advantage of the character of their downtown that has been cultivated over, over the decades by these standards that have been in place. And downtown has really enjoyed a revitalization, fueled by that historic character. They've also incorporated tax increment financing. They've done some planning for professional uses downtown and have gotten some new development for professional space. They've incorporated streetscape design that is complementary to the, to the historic district. And of course, they've really leveraged the commercial tax credits, federal and state tax credits for commercial buildings in the downtown to a really successful degree, so that you, if you're familiar with downtown La Crosse, you can, you can see the impact of three decades of historic district regulation, commercial tax credits, streetscape design. Another example is, oh, just quickly, another point about La Crosse, they're really clear and transparent about their program on their website. This is the Heritage Preservation, they call it, website, a page on La Crosse's website. They're very clear about what it entails, why they do this, all their forms and applications are there, they have, you can see which properties are listed, are designated locally, which properties are designated under the National Register. So it's very clear and transparent on their site. Stoughton is another good example. They've been a CLG since 1988. Stoughton has a Main Street downtown commercial district since 1989, and also four residential historic districts, 32 individual landmarks designated under their local ordinance. Here's that, that term CLG again, certified local, local government. They, Stoughton has gotten a couple of different grants from my office as a CLG to do a survey of the entire community, to identify the historic, significant historic properties in the community. They just got one this year that they're working on to develop new design guidelines for their downtown historic district. They've got an old set of design guidelines, and they want to update those. And if you've been to downtown Stoughton, you can see the impact of that downtown district and, and the care that they give to their historic downtown. Cedarburg is another one. They've been a CLG since 86. You're probably familiar, if you've been to Cedarburg, with the Washington Avenue Historic District, a district since 1986. They also have a residential historic district, and downtown Cedarburg is, is really a tourist destination at this point. Sun Prairie has the seeds of a historic preservation program. You do have in your zoning code, the, the seeds of a historic preservation ordinance. It's not fleshed out, it really needs to be fleshed out. It doesn't include criteria for designation, it doesn't include standards for alterations, it doesn't create a district to review and administer the ordinance, but it's there. You do have a placeholder in your zoning code. Your comprehensive plan sets a general goal for, to preserve and create new places, events that contribute to the history and identity of Sun Prairie. And again, this is a good mix of preserve the resources that are there and creating new places, so, so that, it's a, it's a good mix of preservation and, and new development like we see in La Crosse. On the National Register, because you don't have anything listed locally under the local des, local ordinance, but on the National Registry, you do have the downtown historic district, which is 28 buildings, and five individually listed buildings, including those on the screen, and two others that have been determined potentially eligible that are in our database. But it, from what I can see, it looks like Sun Prairie has never had a citywide, citywide survey to see what's out there and what is potentially eligible for the National Register, and that could be leveraged, that could leverage state and federal tax credit programs. Speaking of, speaking of surveys, a little bit about the CLG program, and then I will be, and then I will finish up. The CLG program is a certified local government program, the program that I run, for communities that do have an ordinance that has certain provisions, there are certain required provisions that an ordinance, a local ordinance has to have, you can become, and when there's a local commitment to enforcing the ordinance and enforcing state and federal preservation laws as well, you can become a CLG. There are 73 CLGs in Wisconsin. CLGs have access to grant funding from our office for things like surveys, National Register nominations, education programs, et cetera. So in the interest of time, well, here's the benefits and requirements of the CLG program, which I just ran through. I'll skip that, and I guess I'll get the presentation to Scott, in case anyone wants to refer back to it, and that is all I have, and we, I do have, I have time for Q and A, if you all do.
Thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate this very good presentation. What I would like to do, excuse me, is open it up for any questions from the council, and then we'll get to any questions or statements very briefly from, from the public. So does anyone on the council have any questions? Alder Stevens, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, my question is, how much a survey costs, so we can gain an understanding of what might be eligible?
A survey can cost anywhere from $5,000 to $50,000, depending on, depending on the size of the survey area. If you'd like to do a survey of the entire city of La Crosse, Sun Prairie, just a ballpark, probably in the higher range, if you want to do the whole city, $30,000 to $40,000.
Thank you.
Along that same line, what would the grant cover as far as that goes, Jason?
A grant for a survey covers a consultant, you, so you would, you would hire a consultant to do the survey, and there are several consulting companies in the states and in neighboring states that do this kind of work. So a grant would cover all of those costs to hire a consultant to do the work, and also staff time, any city staff time that is allocated to working with the consultant, to hiring the consultant, that's also covered by the grant as well. So you would, you would track any staff time that is devoted to the project and claim that for the grant as well.
So in other words, it would be minimal cost to the city if they pursue this route? Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Alder Crombie?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there a way that we can get a copy of this PowerPoint presentation? And you had talked about historical buildings and that there were two... And you had talked about historical buildings and that there were two in Sun Prairie that I think that are potentially eligible. What are those, can you tell us what those two are or?
Of course, you're going to ask that question and I do not.
Does anyone know?
I, I don't know offhand. I could look it up, but I, yeah, I don't want to spend your time looking that up. I can, I can tell, I can let Scott know.
Yeah, and he can let us know, so.
And I can share my presentation with him too. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. A great presentation, by the way.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, Don, can I open this up? I know you said Mr. Chase and someone else.
Mr. Chase wants to comment on this. The other, Mr. John, I believe wanted to comment on the 5A.
Oh, on 5A? Okay, we'll be coming back to 5A. Okay, so Joe, if we could have your comments, if you could be brief, if you could please keep them to a couple of minutes, we have a huge agenda here.
Okay, hi, this is Joe Chase. I live at 923 Broadway Drive, Sun Prairie. I am the president of the Sun Prairie Historical Society and work closely with the Sun Prairie Historic Restorations, Inc., which has a property that's on the National Register and is known as the Cross House. You are here, right?
Yes.
Okay, so a couple of questions for Jason. Jason, as you know, there's a state statute 62.23, which is, which basically says if a community has property on the National Register, that they have to have some ordinances that support that. Are we, as, as a city of Sun Prairie, are they currently in compliance?
Technically, yes. The, that, that state ordinance, that state statute was adopted in 1995, I think. And it's deficient in that it doesn't tell municipalities what their ordinance needs to include. It just says that you have to have one and technically you have a historic preservation section in your zoning code, but the state statute did not, does not tell municipalities what it needs to include or how it should be structured. They kind of left that up to this office. And so that's kind of what we do and what I, what I do, helping cities that are required to comply with that ordinance to develop historic preservation ordinances that are effective, that meet certain standards. So that's, that's, technically you are in compliance, but your ordinance is, lacks a lot of standard components.
So what I've been told many times, because I'm the one that's brought up the historic preservation, because I was the chairman of the Landmarks Commission in 1998, which we had for two years, and our whole mission was to create a historic preservation commission, which did not happen. But in particular, I've been told by the planning department that our ordinance for historic preservation is not enforceable. By definition, I'm not sure what that means.
That I would say, I would say it's not enforceable because it hasn't, it doesn't create a commission to interpret and administer it. It doesn't contain any standards for historic, for, for alterations to historic properties. It doesn't contain any criteria for designating historic properties. There's really not much there to enforce. So yeah, I would concur with that evaluation, Joe.
Okay, so my, my question about the survey, which is, I'm astounded by the fact that there's a price tag like you're suggesting. What kind of, what do we get back as a report? Is it similar to what the state is, the National Register for Historic requesting? Because I'll, I'll add then, as you, as something you can comment on, since there already is an AHI inventory out there and it shows approximately 80 properties with the designation Sun Prairie. And when you break that down, 30 of them are already on the National Register, so it gets us down to somewhere around another 30 that may be eligible within the community based on the AHI survey from the past. What would a survey for the future look like that would be different than the AHI?
The properties that are in the AHI in Sun Prairie, most of them were surveyed, in other words, looked at and noticed as being old and maybe meets the standards. Most of those were identified in the late 70s. So we have very little information about whether those properties are still extant, what the condition of those are. The other component of what's in the AHI are properties that, most of the, most of the ones that are in the downtown historic district. So, and also there's a, there's, there are properties in there that turned up during surveys that were done for like road projects. The Department of Transportation, when they do a road project, they have to survey the area of their project to identify historic properties. And so some of the ones in the AHI are those properties. There's never really been a comprehensive, a comprehensive property by property survey in Sun Prairie that, that will really tell you what is out there. What is out there, what, what meets certain standards, criteria in terms of being historically significant. So that's what a survey does. And what you would get at the end is a full report. I thought I had one here on my desk, but I don't. A full report that, something like this, that will tell you every, every property that the consultant determined to be potentially eligible for the National Register, properties that have a high, high degree of integrity. It can guide the city in designating National Register properties and thus targeting tax credit leverage to those properties. So it can be a really powerful tool for bringing tax credit financing to properties in Sun Prairie. You, it can tell you what, which properties have some important associations with the history and heritage of Sun Prairie. And yeah, so you can use it to determine which properties you'd like to protect with a local ordinance. So you get a, an evaluation of essentially all of the properties in Sun Prairie.
Thank you very much, Jason. Joe, Joe, we have to move on, I'm sorry. We are, we're well beyond. Okay, next item on the agenda, thank you, Joe, for your comments. Next item on the agenda, 6B, and thank you, Mr. Tish, appreciate it, we will be in touch. Thank you. 6B, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding the sale of not to exceed $4,920,000 general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series 2021B, materials to be distributed.
Yes, I think, Mr. President, we have Todd Taves on Zoom there and he'll be able to walk the, the body through it.
Thank you, thank you, Aaron. Mr. Taves?
Thank you. So we received bids this morning on the bonds and the notes, and I'm assuming you can see my screen at this point.
Yes.
Okay, very good. So the, the bonds and the notes collectively finance your capital improvement program for the current year and we also had a refinancing we added. So with respect to the bonds, which finance the sanitary sewer and stormwater projects and are amortized over a 20-year term, we received two bids. The winning bid was from Baird with a true interest rate of 1.69%. The notes, which finance streets and all other elements of the capital improvements program, we received a total of five bids with the winner being Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis. The true interest rate was 85 basis points, so less than 1% for the 10-year money. In terms of the sizings, as they were finalized, we were able to reduce the size of the bonds by $60,000 and the size of the notes by $390,000. And the reason for that is we received in both cases premium bids, meaning that you're receiving more than the face value of the bonds and there are certain limitations on what we can do with those extra dollars, but they either can be used to reduce the issue size or are used to assist in making the interest payments, basically capitalize interest. So there's a combination of those usages. And then additionally, we provide a certain amount that the underwriter can retain as their compensation in the transaction. And in both cases, the underwriters left some of those dollars on the table, which goes to your benefit. So as you approve the resolutions, just note that we did reduce the issue sizes. In terms of the final results, as far as the principal and interest, so with regard to the 2021B bonds, your total debt service net of premium that will be deposited to the debt service fund and used to offset interest payments for roughly the first year and a half, you're going to pay a total of $5,758,151. That was about $6,200 less than the pre, or more than the pre-sale estimate that we had provided. With respect to the notes, your total PNI, less, again, some premium deposit to debt service will be $8,983,492, and that is $87,000 less than the pre-sale estimate. The last comment I would make, as I mentioned, there was a refinancing element. These were the city's 2014B GO notes. We had estimated that there would be total savings of $44,556. In actuality, final savings were $62,000 and some change. Of that $62,000, about $40,000 will be a reduction in the debt levy over the next three years with lesser amounts of savings that will benefit the sewer utility, storm utility, and Kid Number Nine. So all in all, good results today and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I have addressed both this item as well as the next.
Okay, before we address any questions, let's move on to the next one and then if you wanted, if anybody has any questions on either one of them. Next item, 6C, is consideration, discussion, possible action regarding the sale of approximately $8,745,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2020A, materials to be distributed. Mr. Taves, would you like to cover that and then we'll have any questions?
So, so what I just covered was the results of both the bonds and the notes.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions on either one of those? Okay, hearing none, would anyone like to make a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept both the 8.355 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2021C, and the $4,860,000 general obligation corporate purpose bond, Series 2021B.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Alena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Taves.
My pleasure.
Okay, next item, 6D, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the creation of a transportation coordinator position. Mr. Schleicher, are you taking this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stacker. With Philip Gritsmacher leaving the city, it provided us a chance to reevaluate the transportation and planner position currently housed in the planning department. The combined heavy workload in the planning department and the numerous transportation-related activities have made the duties of that one position too great for one single full-time position. The public services and community development departments are proposing the creation of a new transportation coordinator position and then hiring Philip's old position as a full-time planner position. This transportation planner will be responsible for activities such as coordinating the commuter and local bus services in the city, chairing the pedestrian safety task force of the city, staffing the transit commission, as well as the bike pedestrian subcommittee of the Transit Commission. The position would also review new developments for transportation-related issues and identify, apply for, and administer transportation-related grants. So far this year in 2021, the city has received a total of grants from three different federal programs, the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the Standalone Signal Program, and the TAP, which is the Transportation Alternative Program that is funding a multi-use path in the city. So the HISP grant was approximately $1.9 million, the Signal grant was $850,000, and the TAP grant was $200,000. There are other additional grants that we feel like we could position ourselves well to apply for in the future, such as the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program or the STBG, also a federally funded program. You may ask, why now? Why can't this position wait until 2021? I think the biggest reason is we need to figure out how we should staff the planning department, what hires should be made in the planning department, whether it should be a shared transportation and planner position or strictly a planner position. There's ongoing coordination with Madison Metro. There's current grants that have been awarded that need to be administered. And then there's ongoing work in the transportation-related areas, development issues, as well as the ongoing traffic safety programs in the city. In addition, there's another upcoming deadline for an additional grant for the HISP grant coming later this summer. So we want to be well positioned to take advantage of as many of those as we can. While why it's important to me and to Scott, the, the high workload and vacancy in the planning department creates a real need for an immediate hire and there's many ongoing and future transportation projects occurring in the city. So at this point, both Scott and I recommend moving forward with creating a new transportation coordinator position. And I do believe we have a resident that is wishing to speak to the body as well, just for your information.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Schleicher. That was, answered probably my main question in the words of the ghost of Al Guyent past, who said we should wait until these additional positions are evaluated against other positions. I was wondering why we're bringing this forward. Does anyone have any questions for Adam before we move to outside? Okay, do we have somebody on, from the outside wishing to speak, Don, on this? Was, I suppose it would be Al.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is he on right now?
Should be.
Mr. Guyent, are you there? Al, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, good.
This is Al Guyent, present, not the past.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Al Guyent. My address is 1176 Bergun Drive, Sun Prairie.
Thank you.
All right, all right. So yes, you are right. Normally, I have, when I was older among you folks, resisted most mid-year positions unless it was really, really imperative and I resisted most. I agreed with some. And so as my experience as chair of the Transit Commission is that we can't wait on this. Madison Metro isn't going to wait for us to catch up. They have to keep moving. The people that hold other grant money, Adam just mentioned a lot of grant money that's currently available. I won't go over that same list, but I spent half the day looking at the types of money that's in the federal infrastructure bill that's bipartisan, the $1 trillion that the Republicans and Democrats both agree on. It has billions of dollars for all types of transportation services and modes, including the bike paths and roads and, and safety on places like Main Street, improvement pedestrian safety. We need a up-to-speed, fast-moving transportation planner now to keep pace because no one's going to wait for us. And that federal money is, according to the current draft, is going to be mostly at the discretion of the governor, like some of the other federal money has been. And we have a governor who understands the importance of transportation and all these ways that we are using and needing here. So we need to get somebody who's competent, who can look at Platts for the future development of the city and say his or her recommendation as to how that plat should reflect our transportation strategy, which we've got to come up with. And we need a transportation coordinator to come up with an overall transportation strategy that will fit with the Transportation Commission. So I really plead with you folks to listen to Al Guyent, the present, not the past, and see where this position, thank you.
Thank you, Al. Okay, does anyone have any questions about this position? Alder Stevens?
No questions. I wish to move for approval of the creation of a transport-
No questions. I wish to move for approval of the creation of a transportation coordinator position.
Okay, we have a move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Alder McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm concerned about the amount of money that we're looking at for this additional position with the city in yet next year's budget. I realize that we have the money to spend now for somebody, but for next year's budget, that's an additional position that we have to fund if we cannot get grant money to cover it.
Alder Jacobs?
I echo what Terry is saying. In fact, I'll even go further. It's more money than that, because if you listen to what Adam had to say, then we're taking a position that was only one position, and we're going to make it two positions. So not just making one person here, we're going to add another person. So I know that we can't take actions that will bind future councils, but I, you know, I was kind of sold on this by all this grant money that's coming in. But if the grant money doesn't continue to come in to pay for this position, if I'm still here, I'll be moving to eliminate it.
Okay, any other comments? Alder Yocish?
I'm strongly supportive of this motion. I think that now it's a real imperative time that we deal with the transportation issues, and Adam certainly mentioned a number of them, all the decisions we need to make on both local and overall bus service, the grant money that's available, pedestrian safety, and Adam listed a number of others, but I am strongly supportive of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Oppenheimer?
The only thing I wanted to clear up, Mr. President, is that we've mentioned the grants as a success of the position. We have not said that the grants would pay for the position. So that may be more symbolic than reality in the sense that certainly the position leverages the ability to get grants, but it's not paid for by the grants. And so I guess I want to make sure that that's clear from the beginning, that it is a levy-funded position, like most positions within the city, but it certainly will be bringing dollars in to the community through grant applications. That is one component. It's not the only component of the position. We obviously have a lot on our plate when it comes to transportation: complete streets, bike and pedestrian facilities, obviously a BRT, local route planning and design. We have a lot on our plate from a transportation perspective, a lot of ambitions as a community that we'd like to achieve. So it's all of those factors that play into the position. So just wanted to make sure that the council's aware of that before acting.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I see Mr., our police chief, Mike Steffes, came up on the screen. Mike, do you wish to speak on this? We can't hear you if you're out there. There he is.
Sorry, getting my computer up and running there.
Good evening.
I would be in support of this position, to be able to assist. The pedestrian safety task force has been a very important aspect for everyone, so I think it'd be very good and beneficial to be able to help continue the operations.
Thank you very much. I have a question of you, I guess, Mike, and it's probably depending on how I'm going to vote, but if you had to evaluate this position against an additional patrol officer, what would you do? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, by the way.
I would probably want to have some more conversation with Aaron and with Adam to really look at the staffing needs for both of our departments. I haven't looked at that to be able to do a comparison study. We did our explanation of how many officers we do need at the police department. We had presented that earlier this year, but so it'd be a challenge for me to be able to say that right now off the top.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but that's what's going on in my mind right now. It's evaluating this position against potential, as you've stated, patrol officers coming up, along with possible other safety, let's say EMS, if certain projects materialize that may down the road. I'm looking at this position versus that, and which one do we choose, knowing we just have, you know, finite funds? We don't have unlimited funds, so. Okay, thank you. Alder Bowling?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, in regards to my thoughts around this and support for it, I think about as the city grows, and just like, you know, a company, sometimes you get into these points of specialization in order to accomplish a task, and to really put the energy around to see really across the board all these components that this particular position does. And we're just getting it to size and scale where I think that, you know, there is some risk, as Alder Jacobs has and Alder McElroy have talked about, but I think that there is also a risk if we lose sight of that bigger picture, broader view of those particular components of our city growth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Elena, would you please take the roll?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
McElroy?
No.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
No.
And that passes six to two.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding Phase One projects funded by the American Rescue Plan Act.
Mr. President, if I could, I'll take that one. There is a memo in your packet that we've chosen to start the process of distributing funds with the ARPA grant through kind of a phasing approach, and what we think we can accomplish early on in Phase One. So you can see that we've listed out a number of efforts that we feel 100% confident in that meet the requirements of ARPA. We have received the first half of the funds, so those funds are in the city's account, so that's roughly $1.8 million that is available to us to begin allocating. We've had conversations with the county and their staff on items that are of need. They have, as I've mentioned previously, they have adequate funds for rent assistance, but they have indicated mental health may be a space that we should explore. You can see that in Phase One with the hiring of a social worker to help with that community needs assessment, and really looking at mental health as a focus. But one of the things we wanted to do is make sure in Phase One that we ask the community what their needs are. And so you can see there's two particular projects that we'd like to take on that will help us do that. One is a community needs analysis, so conducting that, and the second one is an equity study. So two areas that where we can have community engagement and help us understand what the community need is prior to allocating all of the funds that we would have available. So you can kind of see where we're going in what we provided as Phase Two. We're not asking for your approval on that at this point, but more of kind of just a where are we going with ARPA funds? We are pretty early, if you were to compare us with other communities as to where we are, is having projects already identified and starting to move forward with the ARPA funds, but we want the community to know that as we receive resources, it is our interest to get those resources working in the community as soon as possible. So we wanted to get Phase One to you. We actually had the memo completed and in your packet prior to the guidelines being fully completed. Those just came out as well. So it's early in the process, but we'd like to get started. So we wanted to make sure we talked to you and see if we were on the right track as far as how we would begin the process of releasing these resources.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Are there any questions pertaining to Alder Jacobs?
I have two questions. One's for Adam, I think it's for Adam. The other one, I have no idea who it's for. But Adam, first question's on page one. Can you explain to me why the installation costs are so widely varied for these four places for the air filter?
As far as the air filters, certainly. It depends on the type of heating and cooling systems in the different buildings. So the library has rooftop units, roughly eight rooftop units, so you put one of these devices in each of the units, very easily accessible. The City Hall building has between 30 and 40 individual heat pumps all throughout the building, and they're up in the ceiling areas above the, so a lot more labor to get to all the areas, and then additional ionization units needed for each individual heat pump. The West Side Community Building was built more closer to the library with fewer units, and then the Colonial Club has fewer units yet. So it really has to do with the number of those ionization devices that have to be installed.
So is that more of a labor cost or material cost?
Both. So it's more materials, but it's more labor to install. But I would say it's more heavily driven on the materials and the labor.
Okay, thank you. So the second question is about the Neighborhood Navigators, which is something I support. It's on page three. It says $50,000 estimated, but it doesn't say for what. I mean, I'm really not sure about allocating $50,000 for, I don't know what. Who's going to talk to that one?
Yeah. No, I'm happy to do that, Alder Jacobs. We included that in Phase Two, so we're not asking for the city council's approval on that. It's more of kind of that, as I mentioned, that kind of roadmap of where we're going, or where we think we may be going with it. So the thing I can relate it to the best is the county actually created a program with ARPA funds where they had organizations like the Neighborhood Navigators, or could be other organizations outside of that, come forward, present their scope of work, and the funding that would be required, and we could evaluate that and to make a determination whether that aligned with our goals. So it was to let the city council know that we are interacting with those groups. We think we could create a program that was similar to what the county is doing, in the sense that you allow these individual groups to make proposals, and let you know what it is they plan to do, how they would help the community, and then we can react to those proposals. We can say, yes, we think that that meets our goals and the needs of the community, and then you could release those funds at that time. At this point, we're not ready to do that, but it's kind of telegraphing where we're going, and the fact that partnerships is going to be key as we roll out these funds. You know, the county, for example, and the City of Madison, a larger entity, both already have human services programs and departments and staff already in place. We have to create that now from scratch if we were to do it, and so partnerships are going to be key where we already have groups in the community in that space. So another example would be Sunshine Place, and there are others out there that we could partner with. And so that's what we wanted to relay to you.
So that was, you know, again, as usual, Aaron, a strong explanation, but I still have one follow-up question, which is, why the $50,000? Is that what we're telling them that, oh, somewhere in the ballpark of $50,000 is where your proposal should be?
It's kind of a guesstimate. I mean, at this point, we don't really know what the Neighborhood Navigators would propose, but it's, I think it was, it's a fair amount, for lack of a better word. It could be wildly different. It could be less, as you said, it could be more, but I think, you know, $50,000 is probably a fair amount to earmark.
Okay, my last question, then, they said it could be wildly different. Like, how wildly different on the upper end?
Well, it really depends what they propose. So for example, let's say they proposed something that met the city's goals, let's just, for example, mental health services, and they wanted to assist with that, and they came forward with a proposal to do that, a scope of work, and let's just say, for example, it takes $150,000 to complete that work. You'd have the ability then to evaluate that scope and to determine, does it have that amount of value to it, $150,000? And so that may fluctuate. They could make a proposal that's $75,000 or $100,000. We put in $50,000 as a placeholder. That's probably a fair number, but they may come up with a more aggressive proposal that meets more of the community need, and the city council may feel comfortable allocating dollars towards that need. I believe the county allocated $5 million to community groups for the purposes of making proposals for these funds. So just to give you that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Does anyone else have any questions before we? Okay, I have one question, Aaron, and really it addresses Phase Two, and it would be ongoing costs. Are there any ongoing costs that the city would incur as a result of Phase One or Phase Two? Let me ask the specific question. You have on here, staff is proposing to partner with Tenant Resource Center to assist the needs that they might have. TRC is intending to focus on the evictions and counseling. Staff is reaching out to TRC to develop a program that may provide assistance in these areas. A rent counselor is approximately $60,000 annually. So when the grant money is done, does that mean the city would still be on the hook for a rent counselor?
It's a great question, Mr. President. So we are aware that the funds run out. So everything that we will have to agree to is either finite, or there's an understanding on the part of the city council that would be approving these, that they're willing to transition it to some other type of city funding, likely a levy-funded. In the case of the specific program that you mentioned with the rent counselor, we had a conversation with the county about rent assistance, and it's going to take them a couple months to set up their program. Once their program is set up, they have sufficient resources available. They have no need for our resources, but there is a gap between now and when they can get their program set up in the fall. And so they actually said to us, that may be space that the city could enter into, is just that gap in the next few months before we can stand up our program. So that's what that particular section is referencing. Now, an area, same concern, Mr. President, is the social worker position that we are proposing. That one could be continued on if the city council felt that there was a longer-term need. However, when we have the conversation with the social worker upfront, there'll have to be an understanding that it is a grant-funded position, and that if the city council does not choose to transition it onto the levy, that the position would have, would end.
Okay, so any additional long-term would come to us as a
Absolutely.
levy vote?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. So Alder Yocish?
I'm sorry, if you weren't finished, I can wait.
I was going to ask for a motion to
Well, I was just going to ask maybe the same question regarding the mental health assistant. It's $275,000, and that would be a large amount if the, it would be taxpayer-funded in a year or two or something. Can you address that one?
It is a challenge, because, one, it's not space we're typically in as far as providing mental health services to the community. So what does that look like at first is the first challenge. What exactly is that $275,000 or any amount really purchasing? And that is a challenge for us in the sense of how do we create a scope and a program? The other is, we know that the money is finite. So how do we enter the space and not create a situation where the money runs out and now there's no service anymore? So how does that work at the end of the day? I see Jake lit his screen up. Jake really did the work as far as looking at the mental health services. So if you do have questions specifically to that, that's Jake's background, and he did do the research on it. So happy to have you, if you'd like to delve deeper, Jake would have more information than I would.
If I may.
Sure. Jake, would you like to answer that?
Yeah, maybe Jake could comment first, but I wanted to make a comment.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you, Council, for giving me this opportunity to speak about it. So I was tasked, because of my background, I used to be program coordinator with National Mental Illness in Dane County, so I reached out in kind of the limited time I had to mentors and former colleagues of what would it look like, or what, or some initiatives we could do with the mental health. And one thing I want to point out is, mental health is very difficult, because it is ongoing, and there's not one thing that you can just do. So we are, that is kind of the space of ongoing costs. So a couple of the things that I came up with after talking to some of my former colleagues who work in this field, you know, there are a couple of different initiatives, such as bringing on a peer specialist. And if you don't know what a peer specialist is, it is someone who identifies as living with a mental illness that provides connection and support for others living with mental health issues that aren't connected to those supports in Dane County. So a couple of different organizations in Madison for sure have them, like Wisconsin Family Ties, but one of the things I looked at is what would it look like to put some of that money into somewhere like Sunshine Place, and where a peer specialist could, and a family peer specialist could help those families in our Sun Prairie community, help get that access and find that support with struggling with mental health issues, because certainly with the pandemic, we're looking at those who have not previously had mental health issues that are experiencing them, that might be situational, and those who are experiencing who are experiencing them chronically are now worsened. So looking at different pays for that would be 92 to 102,000 if we brought in two people who could be a peer specialist and a family peer specialist. I see Chief Stepis also lit his screen up, and I think one of the things that we kind of talked about together was, what if we could use this funding to bring on a social worker? I see, when I was doing some of this research, that a social worker is planned for the five year financial management plan, and I didn't know if there were ways of bringing on that social worker sooner with the ARPA funds so we could address immediate need. The amount that I saw for that in the five year financial management plan was $99,584. And then lastly, I'll wrap up and say, you know, the two final ideas I had were, what if we could pair a peer specialist with EMS? EMS is not necessarily equipped to handle the ongoing needs of someone experiencing a mental health issue after a crisis, and I think that could be a good way to remedy that situation of if a crisis happens, we could pair a peer specialist with the person that the crisis or the person that experienced the crisis. And or could we find ways of transportation to find, whether it's a voucher or or some sort of funding where those who need access to the resources in Madison, since it's so rich with mental health resources, and we could provide them some sort of funding or way to access that to get those resources in Madison? So I kind of just really shortened up some of the research I sent Connie and the initiatives I proposed, but that's kind of what I wanted to provide to you all. So if you have questions, I'm happy to take those.
Thank you, Jake. Chief Stepis, would you like to speak, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud Jake for the work and the research that he's been doing. He really is creating a best practice for law enforcement response to mental health and then having the tools to equip us with being able to make sure that these incidents resolve adequately. So the social worker position that we're discussing would be able to follow up on calls for service that we have that include crisis intervention, mental health issues, homelessness, substance abuse, some sensitive crime investigations, emergency tensions, critical incidents, even traumatic events to different people. And the pure response professionals that Jake is referring to would be able to be resources within the community to be able for this social worker to be able to hand somebody off to other people who have experienced similar trauma and have had training to be able to help them out. So I'd be very excited for this program. I think it would be wonderful to be able to have that. As we all know, law enforcement is not the best tool to be responding to many of these calls, and we do our best. Right now, our mental health response team has 13 people that we are regularly visiting and working with. We do that because we have some crisis intervention team training and because we have 24/7 operation. But to be able to have somebody that specializes in that would be much better for community members that have and experience mental illness.
Thank you very much, Mike.
You're welcome.
If I could just?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I'm I'm very supportive of the mental health and caseworker concept, and these are something these are ideas that certainly have been talked about nationwide, what with COVID and the increase in mental health issues in our our communities. Certainly, I'm I'm supportive of of looking into this. Certainly, we'll have challenges with putting together a budget in the future with with these areas, but I think I applaud that these are in these plans here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I would be looking for a motion to accept Phase One.
I'll make the motion to accept Phase One.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, Elena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stocker?
Aye.
That passes eight zero.
Thank you. Okay, 6F, consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding licensing agreements for the use of downtown dumpster corrals.
Mr. President, Taylor Brown will be covering that.
There she is.
Yep.
Hello.
Good evening, Taylor.
As you saw in your packets, there is a memo associated with kind of giving some background information on where why we're doing this. This is a contract essentially, and it does need to be approved by Council. That's kind of the formality that we are moving forward with here and the fact that there hasn't been anything in the past. I have received very little feedback from any of the businesses. A couple of notes about changing names of businesses on the final pages of the contract and one who is going to assess, talk with assessing about the number of rental units in their building, did not realize that that's the information that was provided to the city. But otherwise, it's pretty smooth sailing at the moment. I have several signatures already, too. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you very much, Taylor. Does anyone have any questions for Taylor? Okay, hearing done, let's formalize this. Do I see a motion?
I'll make the motion to move forward with licensing agreements for use of downtown dumpster corrals.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
McElroy seconds.
Okay, thank you very much. Alder Jacobs?
I have a question for Kristen or whoever wants to answer that, which is, why was there not an agreement in place beforehand?
Probably Taylor, you're probably the best to answer that.
All right, Taylor, let's hear it.
We don't know is the best answer I can give you. We've gone through lots of records, talked with property owners. Essentially, everybody just agreed that they would use the dumpster, and as it's gone on, people have come and gone, and other people have used the dumpsters, and then other people ask, and we didn't really have a good background on what was allowed and what wasn't allowed. So this time, it was a handshake agreement from the past, which is my best. So we don't know.
So you're saying handshake agreement among the users, but I'm asking from our end.
We don't know.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion? Elena, would you please take the role?
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polanski?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stocker?
Aye.
That passes eight zero.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to jump back for just a few minutes. Is Mr. Dunlop still on? Yes? Okay, we're going to jump back to 5A, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the 2022 to 2031 CIP, and we'll bring on Mr. Dunlop. We do have further work sessions, as you know. We'll be talking about this again August 3, and then further workshops later if needed. But since Mr. Dunlop hung with us for so long, I would like to give him a few minutes to speak. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. For those of you who don't may, my name is Bill Dunlop. I live at 1843 Barrington Drive, and I am also the Vice President of the Sun Prairie Parks Friends, and that was a group formed in December to advocate for parks and also assist with both labor and financial resources and advocacy. Recently, we have done a fundraiser for the Pickleball Parks, which has been successful, and raised the matching funds that are required for that project. We've also put a pollinator garden into Wetmore Park and raised the funds for that and assisted the Y and the Parks Department with the cleanup in the spring, which was had a record number of people. As part of our advocacy, we submitted a series of recommendations for slight changes to the CIP, and Parks Recreation and Forestry has reviewed those and has made some recommended changes to the CIP and sent that to the to the Commission, who I think has also favorably looked upon those. So what we like to do is advocate for the approval of the recommended changes from the Parks Recreation and Forestry Department that they have suggested in their July 8 memo and so that we can see some improvements, some additional projects or else changes in priority. Example, we asked for the increase in the priority of the Pickleball project now that the funds have been raised, and also identified some other projects like restroom facilities in Vandenberg, which is a passion of mine. And then this golf was another one in raising the priority of the winter sports study for Sheehan. So we would like to urge approval of those recommendations from Parks Recreation and Forestry.
Thank you very much, Bill.
No questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Bill? I want to thank you for the work that your team is doing that's making an impact. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to seven, report to the Council President. First, I want to thank Don McDermott and his staff, legal counsel, Aaron, and all the staff that made tonight night's in-person meeting possible. This was not done without jumping through hoops. And so very much appreciate it, Don. Thank you, and Aaron, and our legal counsel. Tonight at council, we'll be celebrating the runner-up girls state softball champions at our council meeting. As an FYI, I did send a similar request to the boys state champion baseball coach, and if you have to hear back on a proclamation for them, however, we're just as appreciative to this team and their coaches for making our city proud of our young athletes. Now that we're all back in session, one of the for those of you that are new members, one of our first tasks that we do is a group photo. So I do want to say, I know tonight Yanis is waiting for our council meeting to be done so he can start his basketball game, but it won't be tonight. But at some point in the near future, I'll be sending out a note, and maybe we can get everyone together, and you can dress appropriately, however you want to dress, and we'll take a group photo. So that will be coming up. Also, you saw a note from Jake King that we have a local athlete, Zachary Zemec, competing in the decathlon at the Olympics very soon. Actually, I know there's probably going to be a mass exodus after the meeting tonight, but if you'd like to stick around and we can film or video, best wishes to Zachary. Film each other, and as long as we do this in landscape, Jack's or Jake said, so we'll do that. Looking ahead then, please save the date. This is a save the date note, August 19. It's Corn Fest, and thank you, Alder Stevens, for bringing this forward. If you wish to march in the Corn Fest parade, I spoke with Christina today, who is our new Director of the Chamber of Commerce, if you haven't seen that, replacing Amy at that office. If you wish to march in the Corn Fest parade, we will be assembling prior to the parade, which starts at 6:00. In the past, we've assembled around 5:30, 5:45. Used to be, I know Alder Jacobs and I were holding the sign last time when we got a downpour on us, and that was in front of, I think Jennings and Walter in that area. Previously, it was in the old Hanley parking lot and in front of Dairy Queen. So wherever we assemble, it's going to be around 5:30, 5:45 on August 19. So that is my comments. So next item, report to the City Administrator.
Mr. President, I have a couple items. The one I wanted to bring to the top was, we just completed our recruitment process for the Economic Development Director position. We had a lot of community involvement in that process. I wanted to just mention some of those individuals because you'll know many of them. Two members from our CDA, Jimmy Kaufman and Dwayne Maddox participated. One member from the Sun Prairie Utilities Commission, Emily Stone. Youth and Families and the Diversity Task Force, and Tracy Williams, a former member of Your Body, and Alder Bill Connors. And we had the Economic Development Director from Fitchburg involved in our process. So multiple interviews and assessment process, and it's probably fitting that Taylor Brown's name is on your screen. That's our our selection for the next Economic Development Director of Sun Prairie. So we wanted to make sure you knew about that. There will be a press release that will be going out announcing that. Scott and I, obviously very involved in in that process. There's Taylor, so you can so so wanted to congratulate her, and I know that you're very supportive of that selection as well. So we appreciate your support. And now we move on to Planning Director, Scott. So no rest. We move move right along. So congratulations to you, Taylor. And then there's a couple other just quick announcements. One is the Sun Prairie Police Department Citizens Academy is back, so residents must be 18 and pass a background check. Classes will be held on Thursday starting September 20, and will culminate with a graduation banquet on Thursday, November 11. Class time is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I know some of you have participated. I'm a graduate as well, and it's really an amazing program, so I hope our residents take advantage of that. The final thing I'll mention is National Night Out is August 5 from 5:00 to 8:00 at Cannery Square. So that might also be something you want to put on your calendar. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheimer. And Taylor, I couldn't be more pleased. When I heard that you were selected, I have been biting my tongue, waiting to congratulate you. So thank you, and congratulations. We we know you'll do excellent in that position.
Thank you very much for the support. Yep, and just to keep working.
Yep, very pleased.
I have I have a question for for Taylor. As our Economic Development Director, will it be the Bucks in six?
That's what everybody says, right? But Neil probably is a better judge still of all things Wisconsin sports, so you might have to give him a call.
Okay, moving on. Item nine, referrals. Do we have any referrals?
I I have one.
Yes, Alder Crombie.
Before COVID, we had with the Finance Committee, we we discussed having nonprofits come in and report how they're doing. And I don't think unless we have already, but I we haven't had the Colonial Club coming yet. So I'd like to see a report from the Colonial Club.
Okay, very fair. Okay, any others? I would like to make a referral based on Mr. Tisha's presentation tonight, make a historic preservation referral to begin the community conversation that he spoke of and see where that goes, at least initiate that. And so if we could do a referral on that. Okay, any further items? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved, Jacobs?
I'll second it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Very good. Meeting adjourned.